Now, we're good.
Okay.
We have the same coloring on too.
From the top.
For the second or for the third time, good afternoon. Unfortunately, we had some streaming issues, some technology issues. Thank you for, everybody for rushing in to help us with that. So we are definitely behind schedule here. So I will be very brief. This is a work session on everyday problems that we have in Arlington. Everyday complaints that span from annoyances to quality of life issues to health and safety. We are looking forward to a very extensive presentation on enforcement, which will be, you know, segmented in different parts. We'll talk about code enforcement, zoning enforcement, enforcement that falls under the Department of Environmental Services with traffic, waste, street sidewalks, police, fire, et cetera. So this is an extensive session, and I will pass it for starting immediately to the county manager to get us started.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Real quickly, we did a session similar to this in 2017, but, you know, in the last seven years, there's been a lot of changes in what's going on in our community. And the point of today's presentation is to record it so that people will have a sense of when they have an issue, and there are many issues that come up, where in the county they need to go to get the information, and the complexity of issues around enforcement. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Erica Moore, Assistant County Manager. You will start us off.
Thank you, Mark. So as Mark said, I'm going to start us off and sort of laying the scope for today's work session, some of the background information that's really important. You know, this is a very much an inter-agency, interdepartmental effort here in Arlington with a big communications and education component as well. So again, to reiterate, we're here to provide you an overview of our enforcement efforts here. We'll focus a little bit on the legal authorities for different teams, the organization, how they work, the way they work together, and their protocols for different uses and issues that come up that impact the quality of life and community well-being here in Arlington. And then we will have time to discuss the issues that we know you all are hearing about that we hear about as well. Quick agenda, you will hear from each department team in the same structure. They'll explain who they are, what they do, how they work, and provide some metrics. And then we'll have the opportunity for that Q and A at the end. So what is the approach to enforcement here in Arlington County? We use both proactive and reactive, responsive, excuse me, strategies for community well-being. The idea is that the more we work on the proactive, the less we have to do and be responsive if people are aware of what they need to know to be in compliance with our various codes and ordinances. A good example of this would be the Arlington Restaurant Initiative and the CLEG, the Clarendon Live Entertainment Group, where we're working very proactively with our business community in that area, but there are still opportunities and situations that there is response or complaint that we need to respond to, or report or complaint that we need to respond to. We are applying multiple state codes and local ordinances to navigate and enforce. And there are, you know, differences in what different groups can do. So there are times where you might have one team that can respond in one way, but is outside of the authority to respond perhaps in the way the public expects. And so we have to work through those situations. We always approach with voluntary compliance in mind. We want to make sure that people are aware of what they should be complying with and give them the opportunity to come into compliance with it. We always deploy a professional, trained staff to help with challenging situations. And it may not always be enforcement staff. We may get, for example, in hoarding, the code enforcement or police may take the initial report, but will recognize very quickly that perhaps we need to get adult protective services from our DHS team involved, and we will bring them in to really help give us a holistic approach to that situation. And then, of course, we conduct public outreach and education with the ARI, as I previously mentioned, as well as with a lot of the graphics that we've been creating and even our website, and really looking at ways that we can improve how the public is entering into the reporting and process. Of course, we have challenges to our approach. We are a densely populated urban community. We have lots of different uses that are coexisting together in the same space, which creates very unique challenges. We are working with multiple county agencies that are responsible, and so that interdisciplinary approach is constantly improving and looking for opportunities. And there are multiple ways for the community to report issues, right? There is the opportunity for contacting law enforcement, or going through our reporter problem, or going through our webpage, or picking up the phone, and the different agencies may be responding depending on the issue or the time of day. So that is a challenge that we're always working with. We do have anonymous or even retaliatory reports and complaints that come up. Anonymous in particular makes follow-up and resolution very, very difficult in order if, whether we need additional information or to let people know what has been done in the situation. And then we have struggles when bypassing established processes, and that can really limit staff's capacity to respond to constituent inquiries. We have a lot of processes in place and different groups that need to respond in specific ways. And so adhering to those is really important. And finally, the Dillon Rule is always going to provide some limits to what we can do. It impacts the local authority and our nimbleness in responding to changing circumstances in how we can handle enforcement. And just to give you sort of a picture, literally, of how this works, if a complaint comes in, it can go, depending on the complaint, to a variety of different departments. Things like noise are handled both by inspection services during the day, police on the nights and weekends. Parking involves many different agencies. So you'll have off-street parking, which zoning department works on, on-street, which is handled by multiple departments, including police and environmental services. You have rodent complaints, which are handled by our environmental health division and DHS. Again, trash and debris are handled both by inspection services and DES, depending on the situation. Same with the number of people. If people are complaining about overoccupancy, if it's in residential, that may be a zoning issue. If you're talking about a code violation, you may be working with, for overcrowding, you'll be working with inspection services. And then property conditions, again, you have different ways that that is handled within ISD, so teams within teams at times. And with that, I am going to stop speaking, and I'm going to turn it over to John with our inspection services division. And if everyone could introduce themselves for the record, that would be great.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is John Santifamiya, and I am the section chief for the code enforcement department. And I will be providing a brief overview of the code enforcement functions in the county. Our mission statement is providing the improvement, conservation, and revitalization of Arlington's physical and social environment. Next slide, please. We have the video.
The Code Enforcement Office is so important in the county. Our motto is to protect and preserve life, safety, and property.
We like to get out in the field in these communities to spread knowledge so that the community can stay up to date with relevant information.
Code enforcement enforces several standards, including dilapidated garages and sheds, and structures that are vacant and open to trespass, and more. Code enforcement does not enforce things such as parking, tenant landlord relations, pet waste, and more. For the complete list, visit arlingtonva.us and search code enforcement.
I know we call ourselves code enforcement, but I like to think of us as code compliance. Our last resort is the enforcement process. Ultimately, you know, if we can educate people and get them to voluntarily comply with the ordinances and laws, then we've successfully met our goal.
The Code Enforcement Off-
Okay, this next slide is our organizational chart. Code enforcement is part of the CPHD/ISD Division under the direction of the Property Maintenance Official. Our staff is currently comprised of 15 full-time employees, which include myself, two supervisors, eight inspectors, and two administrative technicians. We also administer the elevator certification program, which includes a program manager and an elevator specialist. Our inspectors are all ICC certified. They're also state-certified by the DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, through the state. We are also IAS nationally certified. That's the International Accreditation Service, and we're one of actually 14 in the country that have that certification. We're all FEMA certified as disaster inspection specialist. We have Rutgers University certifications as noise specialists, and approximately 50% of our staff is multilingual. Next slide is our legal authority. Code enforcement's legal authority comes from multiple sources, which include the state, local ordinances, and site-specific ordinances. State codes consist of the Virginia Property Maintenance Code and the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code. Local ordinances include the Condition of Private Property Ordinance, excuse me, the Noise Control Ordinance, the Snow Removal Ordinance, the Blight Ordinance, and the Arlington County Building Standards Code. Our site-specific codes include use permit inspections and permit requirements. Federally constitutional law, we are required, we are governed by the Fourth Amendment. Code enforcement is both complaint-based and proactive, with our focus on ensuring safe structures. This next slide is examples of what we do. Complaint investigations, we do a 360-degree compliance review, post-fire inspections, proactive inspections, common area inspections, periodic elevator inspections and compliance. We initiate, we oversee the Clean and Lean Initiative, the Noise Control Ordinance and Exemption Reviews, unpermitted construction and illegal uses, increased field presence through our Mobile Workforce Initiative. We do nighttime noise enforcement, damage assessment, customer compliance coaching. We are very part, we are very integrally participate in the hoarding task force. We accelerate our response to life-threatening code violations, extensions of compliance and participation in appeal hearings. Next slide, please. This slide shows how we work. Intensive service trainings required in code development, building standards, and legal enforcement protocols. Enforcement is a comprehensive inspection and legal process with a focus on safe occupancies. Staff are informative, respectful, equitable, and firm. Investigations are proactive, periodic, or are triggered by complaints. Enforcement is triggered by failure to comply with notices. Our goal is obtaining voluntary compliance through education. This next slide shows, gives examples of our investigative process. When we receive a complaint, the inspector will investigate the complaint and must validate or witness the violation. Once the validate, once validated, the inspector will attempt to contact the property owner to advise of the violation, educate them, and attempt to gain cooperation. If necessary, the inspector will issue a notice of violation, which typically provides 30 days for compliance. If it's an unsafe situation, the timeframe is usually less depending on the situation. After the compliance date has passed, a reinspection is completed. If efforts are being made and exhibited to correct the violation, an extension of time may be granted. If no effort is made, the case would be escalated to the courts to gain compliance. In some cases, such as overgrown weeds and trash and debris, the county is authorized to cure the violation through the Clean and Lean Program. Additionally, several ordinances, such as the noise and snow ordinance, allow for a civil citation to be issued. And this last slide is showing some of our metrics. We have an average of about 2,124 cases per year, with an average of 63 days for compliance. This calendar year, we have investigated 150 elevator-related cases. This fiscal year, we have investigated five code enforcement noise complaints and processed 13 noise complaints, noise complaint reports from the police department. This calendar year, we have also investigated 70 snow-related complaints.
I'm going to turn it over to our, oh, clarifying questions, sorry.
Clarifying questions. I know that we are a little bit behind, but we are catching up. So colleagues, from right to left, Mr. De Feranti, Ms. Cunningham, then any clarifying technical questions to this, to this segment of the presentation? Substantial questions can wait for a little bit later at the end of the presentation.
Not on code enforcement, but in this section up to this point, I have one clarifying question on the constituent, if it's appropriate, constituent complaints section, it says complaint submittal. Is that the same as report a problem, or not quite?
No, we have our own separate, we have email, we take email complaints, phone complaints, excuse me, phone complaints. And the new Acela program is designed so that people can actually go online through the portal and file the complaint directly with us.
Great. Okay, thanks. There's, I'll follow up on the rodent piece of report a problem. There's just a little explanation that is needed because it's a multifamily problem, and so it would go to property enforcement, but I'll follow up. Thanks, Matt, Mr. Chair, and thanks for your answer. That's, that's helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Feranti, Ms. Cunningham.
I think I'll skip it for now. While I get a mic.
Oh, you can use my-
No specific clarifying questions, but just as we go through, I'll be interested in how things have changed over time, both in terms of the number of complaints and our staffing, if there's opportunities for greater efficiency or getting to the bottom of the pile faster.
I will tell you that our staffing has not changed at all in probably the last, well, probably the last time that this type of thing was done, 2017. The level of inspectors remains the same. We do currently have one supervisor position that is frozen, and that does make it difficult for the one supervisor we have to oversee, audit, and manage the cases for the inspectors so that they're, you know, we're assured that they're being done correctly.
If I could add context, you'll understand this more, this is funded out of the Development Fund.
Okay. Ms. Coffey?
Yeah, my question was actually going to be on staffing levels, because I think I saw on the slide that it's been the same since 2018. Do you feel like the amount of work and contacts that you all have gotten have increased over the years, stayed about the same? Do you have any sense of kind of, I guess, trends over time?
Yeah, I don't have data that goes that far back. That was actually before my time with the county. But, you know, from what I've seen since I've been here, our inspectors are being asked to do more, and the staffing has not changed.
Yeah, absolutely. And then I think the only other question I had is kind of, you know, there are a lot of categories of different issues that you all deal with and handle. Do you do any kind of tracking or analyzing of recurrent problems, trends, things that like, you know, you're seeing come up again and again that maybe need to be addressed with specific policy or broader education? You know, like, when do things get elevated from a one-to-one, we're responding to an issue right here, and into a, you know, something's happening?
I know last year, I actually was very involved in updating our care premises ordinance. There were a lot of things that were antiquated in there that needed to be changed and fixed. We try to, but we are regulatory. So, you know, we're basically, you know, you decide what you want the county to have as an ordinance or rules, and we enforce it.
If I could add, and we're getting out of clarifying questions, but that's okay. We'll talk a little bit later, I think Aaron's going to come up and talk about hoarding. And the challenge that we've had is somewhat cyclical, but with an aging population and with more social stress, that is definitely something, as an example, where we see a pattern that is much more pronounced as time goes on. So we do track those things.
Cool. All right.
Any more? Okay, so I have no other clarifying questions. Thank you, colleagues. We can proceed. Zoning.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Arlova Vam. I'm the zoning administrator and division chief of the zoning division. Similar to my colleague, we are in the community planning, housing, and development department. The enforcement team is a team of about eight folks with one supervisor and seven inspectors with some administrative support. And collectively, they have over 100 years of experience in code and zoning enforcement work. Next slide. Our authority is derived from the Code of Virginia and the Arlington County zoning ordinance. And the ordinance is supplemented by about 475 additional site plan, so site-specific ordinances. And on top of that are literally thousands of county board-approved special exception use permits, and Board of Zoning Appeals special exception use permits and variances, all of which are subject to specific conditions of approval. Next slide. Our mission, shown on the slide, indicates our desire to serve as a regional leader in the work that we do, and our core values emphasize transparency, professionalism, communication, teamwork, and accountability. Zoning enforcement inspectors have several roles, but our primary responsibility is the enforcement of the zoning ordinance, excuse me, and the Code of Virginia as it relates to land use. Our staff do this primarily via physical or remote inspections of both buildings and land. We respond to complaints and, to a lesser extent, perform proactive inspections for specific activities. And an example of that would be signs in the public right-of-way. With few exceptions, we are solely concerned with regulating the land use on private property. An example would be the one I just gave, is where we actually are regulating public property. And since the zoning inspectors are responsible for enforcing site plan conditions, they do conduct regular site inspections of projects during the construction process and perform all certificate of occupancy inspections before they're issued. The focus of the work of the enforcement team is to achieve compliance, and therefore a great deal of our work is educating the public on what the applicable zoning rules are that apply to a given situation. And in doing so, we utilize the civil penalties process as provided for in the Code of Virginia in the event a zoning complaint rises to the level of zoning violation. Next slide. So similar to our colleagues, we, this outlines our process. A typical zoning enforcement process, after we receive a complaint, begins with an investigation. As mentioned earlier, we receive complaints by phone, email, or through the Permit Arlington Portal. Inspectors first investigate to see if this is a complaint that was sent to the right place. Through the use of the Permit Arlington system, we can collect more data, so we have partial data for the current and past fiscal years, but on average, about 5% to 10% of our complaints that we receive should go somewhere else. And of the remaining ones, after an investigation has been done, about half are found to not actually be violating a zoning ordinance rule. After the zoning complaint has been validated, we start with a warning notice, which, if not corrected within a specified timeframe, is followed by a formal notice of violation. And if that's not resolved, it escalates to tickets. Most, over 90% of our enforcement cases are resolved prior to getting to a ticket. And again, we go back out and re-inspect, and the goal is that eventually we find compliance. Next slide. This is, our last slide just shows the three main types of work that we do and the types of inspections that are performed by zoning enforcement staff. The blue bar represents the number of inspections performed as part of the certificate of occupancy process, and their inspections ensure that the use of buildings and land are in compliance with the zoning regulations. The orange bar represents the number of inspections in a fiscal year associated with site plan projects that are under construction, and these occur, these inspections occur at various stages of the permit issuance and review process, and often for larger projects on a regular recurring basis. And lastly, the gray bar includes the number of zoning complaint cases we have received for the past several fiscal years.
That's the last slide, right?
Yes.
Correct. Colleagues, clarifying questions. Ms. Coffey?
I think I'm okay for now.
Okay. Mr. De Feranti or Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. I do not have clarifying questions on this section.
Ms. Cunningham?
Can you say a little bit about the kind of time elapsed in that flow? So when you said 10% of complaints need to go someplace else, how long does it take them to get there? Sorry.
I just want to make sure your question's getting captured.
Can you, in the flow, talk about the time elapsed that happens? If someone puts in a complaint, it really should go somewhere else. Is that like instantaneous days?
Days. The goal is two days.
Okay. Goal is two days. Great. Thank you. Sure.
I have one. On your last slide, if you can go one slide back. So the certificate of occupancy inspections, this is now including commercial, right?
That's for everyone.
That's for everyone.
Commercial and residential.
Can you, can, do you have it, is it easy to say what's the split?
Percentage? I don't.
Is it 50/50 or 40/60?
That's a great question. We can find out.
Okay. No problem. We can, we can figure that out. The reason why I'm asking, just for background, is that especially with residential, especially new residential, there's sometimes complaint that the certificate of occupancy, they're, they're fast, they build the house, the new, the new, you know, inhabitants wants, the new residents want to come in, and they don't have the certificate of occupancy that takes, in, you know, perceived forever to get the certificate of occupancy, so we get some complaints of that. Thank you.
Got it.
The Department of everything under the sun.
Can I actually?
Oh, yes, please.
Just thinking about the three different types of bars, do you weigh those differently? Do, you know, does the investigating a violation versus a certificate of occupancy take different resources or amounts of time? Or is it about, you know, if you have one case in any of those bars, is it about the same amount of resources?
So it's the same people doing all three.
Yeah.
And similar to the last question, it's the same number of people that we've had throughout this time frame. Some work is addressed or assigned geographically, so some, and so we try to mitigate that by how we assign other work. So if you're in a part of the county that maybe has a lot of restaurants or has a lot of activity, you might get more complaints or are doing more certificate of occupancy inspections because there's just a lot of turnover happening. And so maybe we think differently about how we assign how many site plans you're responsible for managing. Similarly, if you're in an area that's mostly residential, you're going to be getting different kinds of complaints. And so we try to be mindful of that in terms of how we distribute the work. But some of it is like you have an area, so for looking, picking up signs, for example, like people have a geographic area that they review regularly. We had to switch to a team model for bigger projects. So Amazon, for example, was in, actually, Aaron's area, who's one of our inspectors, but that's a bit much for one person, so we had to kind of proactively say this is going to be two or three people that can trade off. And so that's, I don't know if that answers.
I think mostly, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Vam. Now we can go over to DES.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Louis Araya. I am the Development Services Bureau Chief and DES, a longtime employee, and we are going to go over quickly over DES's enforcement of various codes and regulations. Next slide, please. The Department of Environmental Services is unique in that it maintains the public right-of-way in the state of Virginia with only one other county that totally controls this local-state network. It's secondary roads of the state. We control ours, and Henrico County is the other one near Richmond. So we have a, in this little county, we have a vast area of control over our public rights-of-way, so we enforce a number of codes and regulations, and we're also responsible for- so we enforce a number of codes and regulations, and we're also responsible for the county's upgrade and maintenance of our infrastructure, our stormwater quality, environmental codes and such. We are, we have five bureaus that are responsible for various codes. We have the Solid Waste Bureau that works with our trash and recycling enforcement. We have the Development Services Bureau where I work and manage and oversee, that is responsible for public right-of-way permitting, plan reviews, subdivision approvals. We have the Office of Support Services Storm Management Program that also enforces our resource protection areas, or protects our resource protection areas, enforces discharges, illicit discharges into streams, works with our stormwater maintenance program for stormwater management facilities on private property and, and commercial property, and even county projects. Our Traffic Engineering and Operations Bureau works with residential permit and parking enforcement, and they also are responsible for various activities, or putting signage for, for programs like the Marine Corps Marathon and things like that. They are responsible for working with the police department on special events. And our utility staff or Utility Services Bureau works with the provision of water services, collecting fees for sanitary water hookups and things like that. Next slide, please. We have site-specific ordinances that we enforce. Those are ones that we enforce on private property. We have enforcement of land disturbance activity requirements. We also enforce the site plan conditions associated with public infrastructure. We approve subdivision of land in Arlington County. We enforce erosion and sediment control activities within the floodplain, as well as water quality issues throughout the county. Our local ordinances are the Chesapeake Bay Ordinance, the floodplain ordinance, and the stormwater management and erosion and sanitation control ordinance, which the board last month amended and re, and combined it for a more user-friendly by both our users and staff to, to work with that ordinance, make it less complex. We have a trash and recycling ordinance, wastewater pretreatment and water regulations. We have a parking, residential permit parking program ordinance, and we have a street development construction ordinance that is broad and covers a number of activities within the public right-of-way, and also with plan reviews that allow those activities to take place. We enforce state regulations under the Department of Environmental Quality. We have stormwater requirements dictated by them, including our participation in the state requirements for Chesapeake Bay Act regulations. And we also have the overall umbrella that dictates some of those requirements, ADA, FEMA, EPA, and recently, the more, a recent addition to our requirements for enforcement of access, is the public right-of-way accessibility guidelines, mostly, or everybody knows them as PROAG, and we also enforce the Clean Water Act. Next slide, please. The codes that are enforced by DES broadly or briefly, to give you a description. Chapter 22 Development and Construction, Street Development and Construction. This ordinance allows us to manage the public right-of-way or public easement, allows us to review plans, review permits, issue permits for various activities in the public right-of-way, to manage traffic, to allow people to use, to coordinate between projects, and to ensure that every bit of work within the county right-of-way is under a spec or a standard or a code requirement that we must enforce. The subdivision ordinance, Chapter 23, gives us the authority to regulate the subdivision of land, and under subdivisions, whenever there is a requirement for any subdivision or even site plan conditions imposed by the board to build public infrastructure as part of that approval, we have a subdivision administration office that is responsible for enforcement of bonds and agreements that allow us or ensure that developers build what they are required to build under those approvals. We have a utilities and wastewater pretreatment ordinance that regulates how businesses and other entities are allowed to discharge or collect hazardous materials, oils, things from restaurants and such, before they enter into our system or are removed in, in a certain manner out of the county. Floodplain management is federally mandated, but is also a local ordinance that allows us to regulate development within floodplains, how development is to take place, what is not allowed. We also review, we do a lot of work for fees or insurances, insurance that's required under floodplain management, and we work with partners, both at the state level and local, other, other folks in the, in the department, to ensure that floodplain management does not impact our infrastructure, or whenever it's needed, it's upgraded to meet those requirements. The erosion and stormwater management ordinance, the recently updated one, allows, or gives us the authority to control how sediment and erosion is managed from private construction sites, both commercial and residential. It is, it gives us the authority to regulate how things are graded, how protections are put up and for, during storms or pre-storms. We are, have the ability to go inside and force. We monitor every land disturbance activity, even ones we do not expect or approve with permits for land disturbance activities, and when we catch those, we have a threshold by which we can enforce our requirements. We enforce a number of remedies that, that, that range from notices violation, stop work orders, and if ever we have to do with fines. The Chesapeake Preservation Ordinance is broad. It allows us to regulate all the, the quality, stormwater quality that enters tributaries in Virginia or in Arlington that then go to Virginia, the Potomac, and then into the Chesapeake Bay, under both state and federal law. Next slide, please. This is a broad number of the activities we have, we are able to regulate, and we remove, remove graffiti in the public right-of-way. We have a program for that. I describe the land disturbance activity permits and inspections that we review and issue. Excavation and right-of-way permits are also issued under Chapter 22. Those are the permits that allow contractors, builders, utility companies, anybody who needs to cut the street, work in the street to implement or put in a utility or piece of infrastructure, private or public, that excavation permit makes that happen. We also issue maintenance of traffic permits or MOTs. Those allow us to enforce how developers or contractors, builders, utility companies will manage traffic around or within the areas that will, they will perform work in the right-of-way. We have an illicit discharge enforcement ordinance, of course. I mentioned it earlier. We capture a number of activities that we can issue fines for and ensure those are done through the various environmental codes that we, we enforce, such as the next one, fast soils and grease. Mentioned the floodplain enforcement. The residential parking permit program is also run out of the department. This is a program where, mostly in residential neighborhoods, where neighbors want to have some assurance of parking availability, because of local residents who don't want to lose it to folks just coming into neighborhoods and taking over their streets and parking areas that, so they can enjoy, at least be close to their homes for access. We have our trash and recycling that sit out for compliance. We, you're familiar with all the requirements, how you put out your trash out in the street, what gets picked up and when, and all those issues. Water service regulations, that's the piece that's enforced through utilities. When you buy a permit, one, you must upgrade your water service, not buy a permit, buy a water service and hookup requirements when you add to the system the infrastructure, both water and sanitary sewer discharges. We have the RPA program, obviously, that is the resource protection area protection. We have erosion sediment controls that we inspect daily. We have our MS4 permit program. That program is called Municipal Separate Stormwater System Permit issued by, to every locality in the Commonwealth by the DEQ in Richmond, and that is the permit that allows localities and even users within localities to regulate and protect the water quality before it enters tributaries. And we must pass an audit over every, at least every five years, to be able to keep that permit and correct things that the state says we must correct, or we get graded on how we perform in that particular program. We have private solid waste facility inspections, and as I mentioned earlier, right-of-way inspections or right-of-way permits, those are the permits that do allow all users, and, and since I mentioned some others, I will mention that in residential neighborhoods, it also allows homeowners to apply for permits for simple things such as putting a dumpster when they need to remove refuse from their neighbors, or when they're doing additions, or if they have moving vans, they are allowed under those same permits to, to apply for, for use of that specific, and we sign those, so they can allow, they can do the work within periods of time. And the last slide. Slide, please. This is some of the, some of the metrics that we do each year. We do approximately 4,300 private stormwater facility maintenance inspections. We issue 300 land disturbance activity permits, mostly for residential uses. We have transportation right-of-way permits, about 4,600 per year. We do about 200 and, 2,232 recycling inspections. We issue right-of-way permits that are slightly different than transportation. These are the ones for excavation and other work in the right-of-way, about 1,900 of those. And we chase down about 95 illicit discharges into our stormwater systems, which we investigate. That is my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Araya. Clarifying questions, colleagues? Mr. De Ferranti?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, regarding construction and LDA permits, to try and keep it concise and I can ask later, how does DES and CPHD or zoning work together on those? I think that there is like a checkoff form that you use, that everybody has to check off, but I'm wondering if there's an electronic system, because there's different pieces of it that different departments have to work on? And how does that work? Do you, at this stage, is it an electric, electronic form that you have teams check off on each side, or how does that work?
We do have a system. We, one component of the issuance of certificates of occupancy, let's say for a single home, that has a massive amount of land disturbance, they have a, an LDA or land disturbance activity permit, we must, or the zoning office, building office, will work with us to ensure we sign off on completion of all the requirements under an LDA issuance or a permit, so that they can issue a, a permit for occupancy on a house. Also works on commercial, when we have to work with the site plan conditions that they enforce, zoning enforces, for compliance of stormwater requirements for those activities on pri, on private property in the large sites. We do have the ability to go on private property to investigate complaints that range from the way lots are graded, and sometimes we run into issues with some developers going beyond, above and beyond what was approved in terms of a land disturbance square footage or, or features on a building that get investigated by us for calculations to provide adequate stormwater management facilities, but zoning may also look into it if they attach or do things that require a zoning permit as well.
I guess I'll leave for later the question of, and there are benefits to this, whether it's electronic or whether it's.
I'm sorry. That is, we do have our Excel permitting system, which captures the sign-offs that we are to do, both for the zoning requirements and certificate of occupancy requirements. It coordinates the billing and the fees that are associated that is charged for those activities within that system, along with all the other building checkoffs that are needed or, before they approve issuances of COs and permits.
Thank you very much. It's very helpful. I mean, there are benefits to electronic. I can also see how there's sort of context that walking around and having interactions could in certain instances lead to, but I'm out of my clarifying questions realm, so back to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ferranti. Ms. Cunningham?
I think similar to all the others, I'm interested in how these numbers have changed over time, and also, are you seeing voluntary compliance that differs across the many different types of work that you do?
We see voluntary compliance in almost every case, because we can enforce it beyond just somebody saying they're going to fix it. We do give them notices of violation, stop work orders. They're very specific with instructions as to what must be done, particularly with land disturbance activities. That is where we do most of our hard enforcement, and those, we give them timelines to, to comply. We work with every builder, every homeowner sometimes, to ensure that they get the opportunity to, to correct as much as they can voluntarily. We ever, hardly ever, have to go beyond anything, any harder compliance to get folks to do the right thing before they get whatever permit or CO is required.
And I guess the layer to that is, what do you observe about voluntary compliance before you show up? Right? So if you think about, our tax system assumes everyone's going to file and do the right thing. Are we largely, as a community, doing the right thing, or is that shifting over time? Do you see more pushing of the edges?
I think Arlingtonians, and we have both sides of a coin on construction activities in their neighborhoods. We have the neighbors who are affected by it, then we have the builders who need to build them, and owners who want those amenities, new houses, additions. Compliance, at least by the folks who do the work, it's their desire. They know they have to do it. They, there are so many things that they know they can't get out of. They have no problems with compliance. Every once in a while, we have to chase down someone who does just want to drag their feet, or doesn't want to do it exactly the way they're supposed to. As for the neighbors who want to see compliance, it also works the same way. We always have to educate folks and neighbors adjacent to, to sites on the, our enabling authorities, the limits, what we can and cannot enforce, and how we can maybe mediate some issues, particularly with erosion and sediment control, or water coming onto their properties from construction sites or finished sites, larger developments, that we often mitigate, or at least try to work between a builder and adjacent property owners. For the most part, they want us to do that, and they're glad that we do it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Coffey?
Thank you. A true clarifying question. What is a recycling inspection?
I want to defer that one for my dear director, Greg or Mike, if they are available.
Yeah, I can, Louis, I can just tell you real quickly.
Yeah.
The recycling, yeah, recycling inspectors are part of the code enforcement for our private multifamily and commercial inspection program. So they, they actually seek to enforce the requirements in the code section for trash and recycling. And so they just go out to the premises and do those inspections, and there's a fee that's charged annually for that service.
So are they, are they looking at, you know, that things are actually correctly sorted, or just that the signs are there? Or what are they looking?
Yeah, really, both. I think that, that they're adhering to both, the fact that they're sorted, they have appropriate signage on the containers, and that it's in conformance with the requirements that we've put out for the inspection, the recycling and programs in the multifamily and commercial space. So it's, it's actually both. It's a signage component, and the fact that they've got separate containers for the different recyclables, et cetera.
Gotcha. But not necessarily that people are successfully adhering to what is correctly recycling versus trash?
Yeah, they, the waste audit part, portion of that is not as regimented as we have with our own in-house municipal solid waste program. So, yeah, I don't think they've got it down to that degree. I mean, it's more of a performance-based process there.
Great. Thank you. And then I think the only other question I had is, you know, there's a lot of different categories of enforcement that DES does. We've talked a lot about LDA, but is there, are there particular issues that really stick out as highly reported, frequently reported, that, you know, that we should be aware of?
The, I guess, the number one complaint, or the most prominent, is erosion, sediment, or water coming onto adjacent property, whether it's muddy, whether it's an unexpected numbers during construction, where sometimes citizens or property owners report flooding, damage sometimes to their properties during construction. Those we have to mitigate immediately. Those are really the, the most common when it comes to that type of enforcement. Once in a while, we will get complaints that are not directly associated with land disturbance. People don't like where we, certain features of the property are developed. Why did you allow them to put the garage in there? Or why did you allow them to build such big houses? The shade is gone, the trees have been removed. Those are also very common complaints, particularly protection of vegetation. And every once in a while, we also, with parks and us, we have complaints of people actually having some of their vegetation on their property being damaged or harmed by damage on the construction site when roots expand or. by damage on the construction site when roots expand or extend on adjacent property, way into the properties developed. Those are minor, occur once in a while, but we have to chase those down once in a while.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Louis, one thing I would add to that is probably our number one reported problem complaint would be in the trash and recycling space and our trash and collection program. But those are both combined incorrect setouts, missed collections, and a variety of indication or problem service issues there that we respond to very timely with our solid waste bureau. But that is probably one of our highest reported problem concerns in the DES space.
Thank you. Just for me, a clarifying question. We hear very often, I mean, I get complaints and concerns actually conveyed about engineering issues, like for example, this retaining wall. I know that it's soundly engineered, but does it fit anywhere in the what-we-do matrix to advise on best practices, or you know, something that helps compliance further down the road, especially when it's about really expensive stuff, that if it's in compliance, then it may really doom a project or so?
As far as, you mentioned retaining walls, we.
As an example?
As an example, but we actually regulate every feature that creates land disturbance. It can be a wall, it can be somebody's patio that they want to expand after construction, or something like that. And our regulations are very specific. We, every builder or developer is required to provide maintenance facilities for both quality of the water that is created by land disturbance or affected by land disturbance, or quantity, which is how much impervious surfaces are built to create runoff that can accumulate and cause problems to either the public right-of-way or private property. In those instances, we regulate and ensure that anything, including retaining walls or anything that is required to be dug, remove vegetation, re-contour a yard, raise it, lower it, those we regulate to ensure those activities do not cause adverse impact to adjoining property and to public infrastructure. Because one of the goals of our ordinances, both stormwater management and erosion, in particular stormwater management, is to reduce those larger footprints, more impervious areas, from impacting our existing infrastructure that would force us to improve and make bigger if it was uncontrolled. So we do take care of that.
Yeah, thank you. So the answer to my question is this is under LDA, man?
Yes.
LDA. So, on to fire marshal.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Hey, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity for us to be here today and talk to you. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the Office of the Fire Marshal. My name is Matthew Cobb. I'm a battalion fire chief with the Arlington County Fire Department, and I hope today that I can provide you at least a 30,000-foot overview of what the office does on a daily basis. So if we could refer to the org chart, I would appreciate it. As you can see there through the org chart, I am the chief fire marshal, and I also am the county's fire official, which are two separate things, and we will talk more in-depth about those as we go through. I am one in the line of fire marshals since the first was appointed in 1927 for $1 a year. We've grown a little bit since then, but that's a conversation for another day. So as the chief fire marshal, I am charged with investigating all fires, explosives, and environmental crimes within the county, and also through agreement, if requested by the city of Falls Church. So in addition to that, as I stated, I am the county fire official, and I'm authorized through the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development to ensure the compliance of the provisions of the statewide fire prevention code. I have one administrative specialist who works directly with me, who tries to keep me under control and our office under control at the same time. And I think, before we get into much further down, I think everyone needs to understand what the Office of the Fire Marshal is and how unique it is. You know, the Office of the Fire Marshal is made up of firefighter EMTs and paramedics that are also trained to enforce the statewide fire prevention code, county ordinances, the fire prevention code of the county, as well as, you know, criminal laws around the instance of arson. So it's a unique branch that we deal with all the departments that are here today in collaboration, to include some of our federal partners, the ATF and the FBI. As you can see, we're broken down into four divisions, the investigations division, the inspections division, and the community risk reduction division, and the special hazards. In the investigations divisions, we have 14 uniformed fire marshals, who are supervisors and deputy fire marshals. They are certified in NFPA 1033, which is fire investigation, 1031, which is fire code inspections, and also law enforcement. These individuals are uniformed and are on shift, as well as in staff, and they respond to fire incidents, explosive incidents, fire code complaints, fire egress complaints, fire lane complaints, as well as life safety code and permit inspections. They also do tank removal permits, as well as hazardous materials permits. Examples of some of the community engagement that the uniformed folks do are, they're members of the ARI, they're members of the hoarding task force, and they're also help police with the nightlife details there in Clarendon. So they're involved in many different aspects. As far as the inspections division, there's one uniform supervisor, one civilian supervisor, and seven civilian inspectors who go out and do the life safety inspections, if you will, for the, for our division. They are, again, they import, excuse me, they perform inspections of occupancies, commercial occupancies, critical infrastructure, and work with our partner agencies to ensure the safety of the community. In that division, the inspections division, we also have one uniformed fire captain who is embedded with CPHD. That uniformed fire captain works along with the plans reviewers and ISD to ensure that the requirements of the statewide fire prevention code are addressed with any code or any plan submissions that come into CPHD. Additionally, we are heavily involved and are, have a presence on many of the zoning commissions, the comprehensive plan, the GLOP, the transportation plan, and many other committees to provide basic input on the statewide fire prevention code and the operational needs of the fire department. The next category of folks that we have working for us are our community risk reduction. Currently, it's one uniform supervisor who works through ad hoc committees made up of fire department personnel, from staff, from fire operations, from within the Office of the Fire Marshal, to conduct public education, community engagement, pre-incident planning, critical infrastructure planning, and systems management for the office. Again, most of these are administered through ad hoc committees. Examples of what our community risk reduction team does are, obviously, community events and fairs, Fire Prevention Week and Open House, our Community Connect Registration Project, CERT, which is our Community Emergency Response Team Training, Hands to Heart, Stop the Bleed, Narcan Leave Behind, Youth Fire Center, and many, many more programs that we tried to present to the community. Lastly, we won't go in-depth into the special hazards group, but the special hazard groups are, again, a group of ad hoc members that are supervised by one uniform supervisor and a part-time special events coordinator. These folks are your special events teams, like you see at Marine Corps Marathon and other places for large events. They're your bomb squad. We have seven bomb squad technicians. We're a medical support personnel for PD, SWAT, and CDU teams. We are the UAS pilot program for the fire department, and we also provide, again, with assistance from our, our partners, the training cadre for high threat and acts of violence. So all of that falls underneath the Office of the Fire Marshal. Next slide, please. Real quickly, our legal authority comes, obviously, through the Code of Virginia. As the fire marshal, I work under Title 27, Chapter 3, Fire Protection, local fire marshal. We won't go too deep into that. And as the fire official, again, Title 27, Chapter 9, as well as the Administrative Code of Virginia, Title 13, Housing, Chapter 52. All of those are, have to do with the Arlington, excuse me, the statewide fire prevention code. One unique thing about the statewide fire prevention code is it does give us the authority having jurisdiction, the ability to make the fire code more restrictive, not less restrictive. Again, we talked about the Dillon Rule at the very beginning. We have to go by at least what the statewide fire prevention code is, but we do have the ability, and we do have a county fire prevention code 8.1, that allows us, because of where we are, to make special rules dependent on what we feel is best for the community. So, the other portion of the statewide fire prevention code, can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you.
Too far.
There we go. Before we get too deep into the operational process, and I don't know that you want me to read you item by item here, but what's important to understand about the statewide fire prevention code, most of the statewide fire prevention code is a maintenance code. Right? We take over approximately one year after ISD has completed and the occupancy permit has been released to the building. So the systems, the fire protection systems and so forth are approved through that building process, through ISD, and then typically, one year later is when the fire prevention code kicks in and we start our inspection process, with the exception of fire department access, aerial access, fire hydrant locations, and some, some of those items that, again, happened during the code, or I'm sorry, during the plans review process. As we go through each phase here, the plans review, I think it's, it's probably generic and the same as with CPHD and ISD. Obviously, there's a submittal of the plan, there's an internal review. Our team members meet with the stakeholders if need be, if there's questions with regards to aerial access or fire department access, or anything that is specific to the fire code. We do a code review with those constituents. It's either approved or denied. Again, we work through, if it's denied, work through ways that we can improve and get to the approval phase. And then more stakeholder meetings, if necessary, and then final approval is always our hope. With regards to a fire explosive, or an explosive, or an environmental investigation, obviously there's been something reported, there's been a fire reported, or a report of somebody dumping something in the waterway. So we respond, we do a scientific investigation. It could require us to get an inspection or search warrants. We do the evidence collection and processing through the state lab. We then determine if this is criminal in nature. If it's criminal in nature, then we would potentially get arrest warrants, make the arrest, follow through with reporting, and then work the legal case and prosecutorial support with the Commonwealth's Attorney Office. With regards to code enforcement, typically code enforcement is either, well, I think it's pretty obvious, it's either observed, or somebody has made a complaint. Our complaint process is similar to others. It typically comes in through email or phone call, or someone makes a complaint to a fire engine or to an ambulance, and the complaint is then sent through our office, and we will follow up. We will do the investigation. There are times where we may need to get an inspection warrant. In order to do that, we can issue a notice of violations, or it can go through all the way to summons. Any violation that goes and is not rectified is a class one misdemeanor of the fire prevention code. We never like to get to that point. We always try to work towards compliance, which we do a majority of the time. However, there are those cases that we will have to charge a class one misdemeanor and go through the legal process to see that through to the end. Lastly, the inspection process, you know, we changed how, I changed how we did business in November of 2023. Our civilian inspection staff used to go out and witness third-party companies that were hired by the building owners to test their fire protection safety systems, and we would go out and watch and ensure that it was done to code, to NFPA standards. We have changed that and have gone to a third-party compliance system called the Compliance Engine, as a matter of fact. And we now accept the contractors' reports, get sent to us electronically, and we review those reports. If there's deficiencies, we'll follow up on the deficiencies, but we no longer send our civilians out to witness these system tests. We have redirected them to get out into the community, to go to the businesses, to go to the commercial properties, and do NFPA life safety inspections. And we've seen incredible results, not only with the reduction in our false alarms, but also in our code enforcement complaints seem to have dropped since we've started that. And we'll, and I'll show you some of the numbers as we go in through here, but that's, that was been a significant change in our business model. If we can go to the next slide, I'd appreciate it. That was a significant change in 2023. We are up and running and at full capacity, and we're starting to see the results of that now. I'm going to start you off at the bottom right. When I took over in 2022, our records weren't necessarily the best, and we didn't have full data from the number of fires that we investigated in 2022. I started that about mid-year. Last year, you can see that we investigated 62 fire incidents within the county, and this year to date, we've investigated 51 fire incidents. Those can be anything from food left on the stove to a full fire or explosion, much like Burlington Street type of investigation. The graph you see at the left, that's the system testing. That is the third-party system that I referred to. So you can see, as of, this is calendar year to date, we have, they have uploaded a little more than 1,300, or almost 1,400, system test records. 77% of those came in and had no deficiencies. 23% of those came in with deficiencies, and we would send out an inspector to follow up on those deficiencies to, A, see if they have a plan for compliance, B, does a notice of violation need to be given, and C, you know, do we require them to do a full system test based on those deficiencies? Next slide, please. This is, I believe, my last slide, and what this shows you is this is the total number of inspections that the Office of the Fire Marshal has done thus far in calendar year 2024, 6,556. As you can see, a big portion of those, 4,468%, are the fire life safety inspections. That's the civilian inspector going out to the business, going floor by floor, and making sure that there are no fire code violations. 81, 81, excuse me, 13%, 881 of those are assembly inspections. So those are your restaurants, that type of permit that's required, you know, they require a permit in order to operate from the fire marshal's office, and that's 13%. Child daycare, mobile food unit, we work with our health department partners to do mobile food units. They are all permitted and inspected, not only by the health department, but also by the Office of the Fire Marshal, to ensure that they are, they operate in a safe manner. Service stations and garages, and then others. So that's a, kind of a overview of the type of inspections that not only civilian inspectors do, but also the permit inspections are done by the uniformed staff, again, totaling 6,556 so far this year. And I believe that's the last slide, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Quite, quite comprehensive. From my left, Ms. Coffey, do you have any clarifying questions? Ms. Cunningham? Mr. Ferranti?
No, but thank you. That's a 660 is a really large number to be, even if you're from the main office. Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Yeah? Quite a session of fire. Quite a session of fire life safety, 4,488. So that's really impressive. I have to say, I really appreciate the depth of this because I really, I really didn't have a full comprehension on the, you know, the broad set of responsibilities that the Fire Marshal's Office has.
Well, and we thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. On to our police.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. I do appreciate the opportunity as well with our partners to address you all to this presentation. I'm Wayne Vincent. I currently serve as a Deputy Chief of Police in my 29th year of service. For the Police Department, we have, as most of you know, we have an authorized strength of 377 officers with the support of about 100 professional staff. Since we've already talked about it, despite the staffing challenges, I think law enforcement across our nation has suffered. We are now beginning to see a trend upward, and we're very pleased to see that. The Police Department, this first slide, please. This is just, this is a 360-degree view of our current organization chart. We have four divisions. I will briefly go through all four without too much deep description. I'm going to focus on two as we move forward. I'll start with our Criminal Investigation Division. Their key objective is to identify and apprehend offenders off reports that come in through patrol. Those are our short-term and sometimes long-term investigations for our higher crimes. They have three sections. There's a Criminal Investigation section, which comprises pretty much our crimes against persons, our crimes against property. We also have an Organized Crime section, and of course, our Homeland Security section. Next is our Operations Division. That is the largest division in the Police Department. The easiest way to describe them is those are our folks who wear a uniform every day. They consider our Patrol Section, which is the core of our agency, our Special Operations Section, which handles most of our traffic complaints, and our TACOPS, which is going to be our SWAT, our CNU, AUS, things like that. Going back to our Patrol Section, their primary function is to respond for calls of service, which can come in various ways, either through the Emergency Communications Section or through their proactive patrolling. Next is our Community Engagement Division. That is our newest division. It's only about a little over three years long. The Community Engagement Division works off three pillars: Community Engagement, Youth Outreach Unit, and our Business Outreach Unit, otherwise known as BOU. And last, our Systems Management Division. That encompasses our non-uniform for the most part, meaning it's our Human Resources, our Fiscal Management, and our newest Wellness and Employee Development Section. As I said, as we move forward, I'm going to more focus on our Patrol Section and Business Outreach Section. Next slide, please. This talks about our enforcement responsibilities, but I want to first just talk a little bit about our authority. We enforce, the Police Department enforces Criminal Code of Virginia in all matters that are criminal or relate to traffic enforcement under the Arlington County Code. Generally, the Code of Virginia provides that police officers do not have authority in civil matters, except where it's specifically authorized, such as temporary detention orders or emergency custody orders. One other I'll mention to that is also things like marijuana, where marijuana, as I think most of you know, consumption of marijuana, if you are seen by a police officer smoking marijuana, that is actually a civil penalty, not a criminal penalty. That first-time offense is a $25 civil penalty. That second offense, again, is a $25 civil penalty with some assistance for abuse. And that third penalty is when it becomes a Class 4 misdemeanor. I want to repeat, I want to also emphasize, too, that it is, we do not have the authority to take someone into jail before magistrate for a first, second, or third offense of marijuana, just to be clear on that. So what do we do in patrol? As I said, that is the core of our Police Department. They're the ones that, again, they respond to our calls of service. They can also do their routine patrols. And while doing their routine patrols, they're looking to enforce those state and local ordinances or codes that are criminal in nature. Moving down to CED or BOU, our Business Outreach, we actually have a portal within the BOU where we give our community opportunities to send requests. And I will tell you, in the three years, we are averaging over 450 requests per year, and that number seems to be increasing. What are those requests? They're everything from requests for, to engage, for engagement opportunities, to teach in the schools, to address civic associations, to address houses of worship, and so on and so forth. There are also similar portals for complaints with our Special Operations Sections for traffic as well. Some of the notable programs I just wanted to just briefly touch on coming out of the BOU unit is obviously the Arlington Restaurant Initiative, which I think you're all familiar with. We partner with various county agencies here today to improve safety and streamline processes for alcohol-serving establishments. Our Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Program, otherwise known as SEPTED. It's a free crime assessment for businesses and residents where we design a physical environment that influences positive human behavior. And again, those SEPTED requests come directly from complaints in our community about usually quality of life issues. And lastly, our Limited Power of Attorney Program. We just revamped this program where we actually designate ACPD as a person lawfully in charge of certain commercial or residential properties for specific trespassing enforcement purposes. What does that mean? Once we have your permission to act as your power of attorney, that means we can enforce the trespassing law and either ban you or if need be, to arrest you. Next slide, please. So what does that operational look like? And again, I said, there are normally two ways that reports calls come in, either through one of the portals, through the Emergency Communications Center, or online reporting. I know we've had a few questions earlier today about efficiency. I think our online reporting is one way we have become more efficient, even with our staff, as our staffing was decreased over the last three years. We are now seeing where our online reporting continues to grow year after year. Certainly, we have mandated some reports to go through online reporting, but I think we're seeing a community of our nature that really like using because it is efficient. I will tell you, there are two detectives assigned to online reporting, and their job, sole job, is to go through those reports, flush them out, vet them, and forward them to the appropriate unit or the appropriate unit or section so they can be dealt with. In some cases, that may be the Community Engagement Division to any kinds of complaints about quality of life. Some criminal, it could be anything from narcotics, or it could be investigations that they can investigate and if need be, make arrests or close out. So I want to give you some examples of what kind of, the process of what kind of crimes and where they go. A simple robbery, I should say. When an officer responds to a robbery, their first job is to do a preliminary investigation on the scene. If they make no apprehension and no arrest, that report is fielded, is guided down to our Criminal Investigations Division. Graffiti, very common. When we have graffiti, those are folded. Again, officers take reports. You can also do it online as well. We take pictures. We work with DES, all the private businesses, to get them removed. And then they're folded to our graffiti detective to be investigated, not just removed. We're looking for those who are defacing our properties in the county. Missing juveniles. Missing juveniles now falls under the Community Engagement Division. So missing juveniles now come under our division now. So reports are taken, and our detectives are on board, are on call 24 hours a day. Loud noise, something that we all have heard a lot about, and we'll probably talk a little bit about more today. But that, to me, loud noise comes in for the Police Department. By our policy, we're responsible for loud noises from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Sometimes that is not in practice for a lot of different reasons. But remember, when an officer is called to a loud noise, it is discretionary for them. We always, like all of our partners, want to get compliance first. And in most cases, that does work, especially for loud noises in our residences. Whether it be parties, things like that, adult parties. If there's a juvenile party, shall we say, a high school party, well, then obviously, officers ensuring that there are no other juvenile laws being broken, like possession of alcohol or drugs, things like that. In cases where we have establishments or businesses, our officers, again, keeping in mind that we have a lot of business, a lot of residences that will call into Emergency Communications Center that there's a loud noise at this business. And where they are, their resident may be anywhere from two blocks to a mile away. Our officers first, probably if they're there, whether it be the Clarendon Detail or not, will probably be to listen to themselves where that business is, to try to determine if they believe they have a loud noise violation. Keep in mind that we don't have meters. They're using strictly their own senses. Then their next step would be to contact the owner, probably go to their residence, and try and figure out, is there indeed a violation? Keeping in mind the ambient noise that'd be coming, particularly if it's coming from an area, high-traffic area like a Clarendon, shall we say. And in extreme cases, if officers find that there is a violation, if compliance is not working, they will issue, they will issue a paper violation ticket, and then they will forward that, which is not a criminal or civil. They will forward that paperwork to inspectional services for follow-up. Lastly, I just wanted to discuss, remind you all that BOU, Business Outreach, and they also, we also, along the same lines, we manage the Clarendon Detail that is Friday through Sunday. It is eight to 10 officers and one supervisor. That also does not include, it includes also holidays or special events that happen outside of those holidays as well. This detail's been going on for several years now, and it's been quite successful. And in fact, some people, I think this is, in the history of the Police Department, our most successful community policing initiative, shall we say. Because this truly isn't just the Police Department working with the businesses, but it's also the Police Department working with our partners behind me, next to me, and also working with our community as well, and those civic associations affected by that. Next page, please. So the Police Department can inundate you if you like with metrics. We can. We have a crime analysis unit that will, that we will take every number we can and break it down, because as you know, our community expects it, and we give it, and we will give it to them. In fact, we just recently opened up our own data hub where now our community can now look up their own data on their own when they want. But I decided to focus just on this one so you could see what our numbers have looked at, looked like over the last three, over the three to four years when it came to noise violations by police. Just to be clear, these are not the violations that came in. These are the violations that we forwarded for further inspection services. Also, keep in mind, too, if you use that 24 as a number, those are the ones that we forwarded to inspection services, but some of them were not actually accepted for clerical, all kinds of clerical reasons. And so that is a point for us, because right now, we still use paper. We're trying to go make it more, a little bit more modern. And so I'm hoping that's something in the works in the future. And that ends my presentation.
Thank you, Chief, Deputy Chief. Colleagues, from any clarifying questions, starting with Mr. DeFranti?
Try and keep this in a clarifying question. And you touched on it, just Deputy Chief, just as you were closing. It seems to me that there's been more concerns than the 24 complaints for nighttime. And I think that's, I'm not, you know, that's, you know, but this should include every complaint from every part of the county that's actually filed, subject to that caveat you mentioned. Some wouldn't be followed through on because if there's administrative, if there's a problem. But that 24 for half the year should include everything that's actually filled out.
Correct. That is for the entire county.
Yep.
That is for the, just to be clear. That's my understanding, that's for the entire county, not just for like Clarendon, shall we say. And that is just what, we decided to violate somebody that does not include the complaints that came in. That is a totally different number.
Ooh. So that, that number could be helpful to be aware of?
Absolutely.
And we don't have to have it now, but if we could follow up with that number, that would be helpful, because I do also think, as you know, and I'll just say it out loud for everyone, I think there's a number of complaints that come to us that haven't gone to you, which is not ideal from my perspective. We have to listen, and I do want to listen, but it is, it's less perfect because it doesn't seem like the right way. So that's really helpful. In the next section, I may have other questions, but that's it for clarifying. But if we could follow up on that, absolutely, great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. DeFranti. Ms. Canham?
This may still be to come, but I did not hear mention of parking enforcement or speed enforcement. I'm curious if you could hit those.
Yeah, because I tried to focus not on traffic, because that's so, that is a number-one priority, and we understand that. That's probably number-one priority for us. We get a lot of complaints on that. I can follow up with you to give you the complaints that come in, but that is also a totally different conversation. It is a large number that is under our Special Operations Section. I can get you those numbers if you like.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think both, you know, our active enforcement and technology investments and sort of how that fits.
If I could add on that, and I think that we will have a fairly, fair-sized conversation about that with the '26 budget. And we did in '25 and '24, we've added staffing there. So more to come on that, but we're happy to do a separate conversation with you on that.
Great. And then parking, which gets a little closer to some of these other building issues.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Coffey?
Yeah, that was actually the topic of my question as well. You know, DES, I think, talked a little bit about street enforcement and parking. But, you know, what is, I think, the relationship in terms of DES and police of especially the, you know, blocking bike lanes and the double parking? I know that since rideshare and food delivery have exponentially increased, that has just become an impossible problem for a lot of neighborhoods.
Well, no, and you're right. And certainly, we work very closely with DES because we know that you cannot enforce your way, you cannot just enforce or just traffic ticket your way out of these problems. And so it takes that collaboration to try and figure out what is the best way to mitigate those issues. That is a close working relationship. We meet regularly with DES regarding these traffic issues.
Yeah, great. And I'll look forward to the budget conversation about, more to come.
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying that we're not talking about, you know, bread and butter issues for the police, which is traffic enforcement and presence and, you know, other enforcement. And we're talking more about the civilian part of that.
Yes.
So one question to me is, you said that for, you know, noise, excessive noise, et cetera, you don't have meters. So, but what is that, how do you collect evidence and figure out? Is that more, you know?
The best way to describe that is discretionary for the officer. It really truly is discretionary. And that's why I said it's interesting for us when someone will, someone will actually call us from a mile away, and they will say they know exactly which restaurant the noise is coming from. And so for us, that's also looking at that, we're going to that restaurant, but also going back to that residence to see what they're actually hearing. Are they really hearing noise coming from a restaurant? Because we don't want to violate somebody or at least put a ticket in for somebody that's, we don't think is a violation. But it is discretionary, and that's why by policy, we are phoning that to inspectional services who will follow up.
Thank you. I have questions on this, but these are not clarifying questions. So we may, if colleagues are okay with that, we may proceed with. You know, the most interesting part of this, which is board and community concerns. It is indeed, because this really reflects what our constituents are saying.
Yes, and just coming back to me briefly, just to let you know the things that we're hearing, that we know you all are hearing. And we do have staff here available to answer questions on these topics, even though they may not be covered directly. Nighttime noise, hoarding, property maintenance, accessory home stays, site plan and use permit conditions, construction activities, and rodents. But now I'm going to turn it over to Deputy County Manager Aaron Miller, and he's going to talk through some of the, how we're implementing our approach on some of these really important issues to you and to the community.
Thank you, Erica. Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, thank you for having us this afternoon. As you know, Aaron Miller, Deputy County Manager for Public Safety and Information Technology. I have the distinct privilege of working on behalf of about 1,023 uniformed professional and civilian public safety and technology officials within Arlington County. And many of those, particularly within public safety, obviously have some enforcement role. I'm here to talk to you this afternoon more about what you've heard with our departments that are constantly balancing this compliance, enforcement, and the multiple community interests. And we've been dealing with, particularly over the past year, those complaints that are very typical of our densely populated and ever-changing community. Since it was established in 2002, the Clarendon Live Entertainment Group has provided a forum to connect members of our civic associations, Clarendon Restaurants, and our live entertainment venues in county departments. And as Deputy Chief Vincent mentioned, the Arlington Restaurant Initiative led by the Police Department has been working to increase safety and economic viability for our restaurants and special events, particularly in the Clarendon area, and has been successful in reducing our alcohol-related offenses and built some very mutually beneficial relationships with our community members and business owners and operators, excuse me. However, in the last 10 years, there have been five major development projects approved, three completed construction in the last four years. That has added 600 residential units built, with another 531 approved to be construction in Clarendon alone. In addition, there's 229 hotel units that are supposed to come online as part of the Bingham Center project, and over 50,000 square feet of additional retail space represented within those projects. We know that Clarendon continues to grow as a premier nightlife destination in Northern Virginia, bolstered in no part by the ease of public access through transportation, safe environment created through our police nightlife detail, and our partnerships with our departments and businesses, and the opening of new restaurants and venues since the pandemic. With this comes challenges in who to call, as you've seen, managing the dynamic environment of our vibrant commercial corridor and the mixed-use center with transit, restaurants, grocery stores, multifamily dwellings, and more. Primarily, we have been faced with noise and quality Primarily, we have been faced with noise and quality-of-life complaints around nightlife, the construction activity, particularly at Washington Boulevard, where it intersects Wilson and Clarendon, and even things as mundane as barking dogs. Balancing these priorities has necessitated us really taking a more coordinated and responsive approach. So you sort of saw these different lines of business, but we have been working to increase coordination, protocols for violations, reporting and follow-up. And as I talked to you previously before, things as simple as aligning live entertainment permits, permit use hours, to have the same hours has allowed us to have more clear violations, to be able to work more closely with our businesses in the community, to have those standards set. And we are continuing to work with our civic associations, property managers, and business owners. As you know, we're going to be presenting some new approaches in both closeout and in the fiscal, in the manager's fiscal year 26 budget, and we continue to refine those processes, as I mentioned to you about last month in the, in the board meeting. I want to thank code enforcement, our Fire Marshal's Office, our police department, and constituent services as we help to develop those, those, those programs. But what that has resulted in for us moving forward is right now coordinating our agencies and our protocols as we respond to noise violations. So for instance, uh, the police department recently held a retraining on noise ordinance, how to write those noise violations, and work with code enforcement to figure out what is missing. So you heard Deputy Chief Vincent mentioned some administrative issues and hurdles. So we had that for the nightlife detail to be able to say, hey, reminder, here's what we can do, here's what we need to fill out, and had that information directly from code enforcement. We've also been having more regular updates, and will have more regular updates, with county departments outside of the Clarendon Live Entertainment Group meetings. So that includes with our business restaurant owners and operators. We know that several of those have changed hands. And then finally, one of the things is, and, and, you know, as mentioned, DES is able to talk more about this, an extensive outreach in pre-construction meetings and with our project pages that include additional resources on noise, on where to report issues, and links directly to things like report a problem to make it very easy to navigate and understand what pathways you have to submit complaints. As you saw, we're looking for really a no wrong door approach to make sure that we can hand it off. Next slide, please. One of, this is one of the, one of the resources that we've developed, and I think we may have shown this before, but I really like this graphic. The, the noise ordinance, both at the, at the state level, both the Code of Virginia that authorizes us to enforce, enforce noise ordinance, and the local noise ordinance is complex. And that's coming from someone who started his government career in Napoleonic law. So, um, let's just, let's just say that the, the job of communications and public engagement, the job of communications and public engagement to, to get this into a very easy-to-understand format has been nothing short of remarkable. What we want to make clear by this is one thing, and this is, this is what I'd ask for your help in. You report it, we sort it. That's it. You report it, we sort it. You'll notice a lot of the numbers right there that says, call 703-558-2222. That's a police non-emergency line. And while I, I hesitate to add more work already to our 911 center, just to sort of give you a breadth of the volume, in the past calendar year, we've had about 225,000 non-emergency calls and about 112,000 emergency calls. So one or two more calls, it's okay. We're gonna, we're using technology, as you know, to help sort some of these out and get people into the right spot. So for, for, you know, the majority of these outside of business hours, we can help sort you to the right place, but we do encourage you, if it's during business hours or issues specifically for things like construction or things like animals, we do have the Animal Welfare League of Arlington, code enforcement, and then some notes there as to, as to how violations are processed and what we're specifically looking for. And again, this is up on our webpage, and we utilize this in almost every community presentation on the subject, and we have handy-dyined little cards too that we printed up for it. Next slide, please. Just another example of how this interdepartmental and interdisciplinary approach is changing and what we're working on. Hoarding is another topic that has, has, has come up lately and been a concern within the community. Studies suggest that between 3% and 5% of the population suffers from some sort of mental or physical impairment that leads to compulsive hoarding, and whether that is hypersensitivity around belongings, severe financial trouble, significant trauma, or simply an inability to clean due to age or limited mobility. Hoarding is a complex and often slowly progressing issue. We have noticed that within our community and within communities nationwide, this has been exacerbated by the COVID pandemic. In a time when uncertainty, fear, worry, the perception of an unknown threat, practices of social distancing and isolation and movement restriction compounded many of those unseen issues. Localities across the country are experiencing this, and we are not alone. Of course, while we are supportive of aging in place, and while our partners, particularly in the Department of Human Services and Aging and Disability Services, work to provide Arlingtonans with the ability to live safely, independently, and comfortably, the reality of the situation is that many individuals have less of a support network as they age. That is what we see happening across the nation. Dispersed families, elderly spouses or friends, simply those individuals are unable to step in to assist in these times of need. The result in Arlington has been a rapid increase in severe hoarding cases where individuals or surviving relatives have been unable to address situations of severe hoarding. And these are, when I say extremely challenging and complex, I cannot understate that enough. There are overlapping legal authorities, legal ramifications, individuals who may be deceased, heirs, probate court, all sorts of, of complex issues. But the fact remains that when these things happen in multifamily or semi-detached, single-family dwellings, there are issues of immediate public health and public safety concern. And we know that some of those issues are having an immediate impact on the community. The result of that is that there can be confusion of who to call. I notice increased rodents. I know who to call for that, but it may be that, you know, it's a, it's another issue with trash, as we've heard, with, it may be DES or Solid Waste Bureau. And so how do we make sure that all of those departments are communicating that issue, to link that information, and leverage each other's specificity to impact the problem and intervene early on? Well, the hoarding task force, as you heard mentioned, consists of interdepartmental groups, each with their own respective lines of authority, with their enforcement, operational support, and they coordinate on a single point of intake and tracking. I want to thank code enforcement and the Department of Human Services, Aging and Disability Services for working collaboratively. They both have a staff member who is dedicated to sort of convening this task force and keeping things on track. Essentially, what we'll do is meet, they'll get together and say, hey, look, I had this call. I got a call for this address, for this person. What do you have in your file? We're able to sort of de-conflict these systems that at times can be disparate across local and even state government with adult protective services and other state and federal programs. And that allows us to have a much more coordinated handoff from the initial notification to maybe a notice of violation, maybe a cleanup, or, or, or what may follow. This is also about changing the mindset of employees, right? And we've been, I want to thank Chief Cobb, I want to thank Deputy Chief Vincent, I want to thank Mr. Murray, the Chief Building Official, DHS, Anita Friedman, and the staff, in really empowering employees to say, hey, look, I want to raise the flag on this. Many times municipal employees will say, oh, I don't know if we can do that because I don't know if we have the budget. One of the things that we have stressed is we want to take care of the community, we want to take care of individuals who's experiencing these problems, and we want to make sure that we are caring for public health, safety, and welfare. And so really, they've done a great job of helping to empower employees to bring these issues to the top and work quickly to rectify them as a team. So I just sort of want to give you an example. Often, fire police may be called first, right, for a medical call, maybe for an individual welfare check, somebody that hasn't been seen. And they may have individual authorities to be able to enter that property and be able to respond if there is an emergency. You know, the fire crew, as Chief Cobb mentioned, may see something that gives them a little worry. They may see an excess hoarding condition or something that the fire marshal calls a fuel load condition, something that provides them pause. They'll send that to the fire marshal, who may also notify code enforcement, hey, look, I think we have something. That sort of kicks off this cycle of how individuals will then talk to each other and say, well, who has the best authority? Is it the fire marshal? Is it under, under their authority in the fire code? Is it the chief building official who can go to the magistrate and get an inspection warrant? How do we proceed? And so from there, we then go and, and work together to request access, obtain a warrant, conduct necessary inspections, work with the family to determine if they've got the capacity and capability to, to immediately deal with the threat. And if not, ultimately, in many situations, the county has exercised its authority on behalf of the chief building official, who has, under the statewide building code, the ability to intervene in imminent public health and safety dangers, stabilize a property to a degree to which it no longer presents a threat, and then working with the county attorney's office, either work with the heirs, executors of the estate to receive a repayment for services, or in some cases, work with, work with the courts to place a lien on the property so that the, the county does have an ability to recoup those costs should we have to move to that stage. And I think, I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Colleagues, now it's the time for, A, clarifying questions, also substantial questions, since this is the last part, right? So, I...
I will go quickly so you all can get to your, we do always want to end on what the opportunities are as we look at this. Obviously strengthening that inter-agency coordination and processes. You heard about two examples, but there's always opportunity there in continuing those staff training efforts. Clarifying reporting processes, ensuring the proper points of contact are known, both internally and externally, and really establishing very clear to some of the questions you've asked, that internal handoff when reports are made to the wrong agency. And a lot of this is the work that's happening with the constituent services team, trying to work, I think, Mr. De Ferenti, when you were asking about that complaint submittal, right? It can go from a variety of different ways that can come in. We're really trying to look at things from the user experience. So we have reporter problem, we have permit Arlington that we need for our code and zoning violations, we have the online reporting from the police, but we want to make it so that it doesn't matter where the republic goes, they can get to the correct place. And just making it clear, you know, on, for example, our reporter problem webpages and things like that, working to refine the top issues that we're hearing and letting people know, if you click this, you will get to the correct agency. They don't have to know what the correct agency is or the correct online reporting process is. Expanding public outreach and education, of course, goes hand in hand with that. And making sure, I think one of our biggest opportunities is making sure we're adhered to the established processes to avoid line jumping and disruption to caseload management. As you've heard, the caseloads for a lot of these teams are very, very high. And really encouraging improved neighbor relations and whether there are mediation services that we can turn people to, to again, improve some of those relationships that sometimes will end up in reports or complaints there. And now I am done.
Thank you. An apologies for not introducing the last slide. That's a, well, it's not so okay, because this is an important part of the entire, of the entire spiel here, right? So the, the ability to, how would we as an organization absorb? Not everything starts as a complaint, but it starts as discomfort, right? And this is where our Office for Constituent Relations...
If I could just interject, because I know Jenny and Alejandra weren't paying attention, but the two new members of our constituent service team often are the face of the public. And one thing I did want to add is we have, in the last year, added a lot of functions to our reporter problem page. And I actually wanted to bring up one specific case. I heard from an anonymous board member by the name of Maureen about signs during the political season. And it turns out that, you know, it was not clear to people where to go. We, I just want to be clear, we do not enter, the reporter problem did not handle yard signs, but we just put a little button there and we fooled people into thinking it's part of it. It's just so when everyone goes to where they want to complain, they could just press a button, and we'd say it's part of reporter problem. It really isn't. But our goal is to have a uniform gateway so that, you know, Arlova will kill me if I ever put, you know, this into, but there should be a place for everybody to go. We're getting there. One place where they can, it doesn't matter which button they hit, they'll do that. And we're going to have a thing at the top of the page that says, do not contact a county board member, hit this button.
I believe seasoned anonymous county board members know that this is a zoning violation and it has to be treated as such. It's also a reason to complain before the electoral board, by the way. For which there is no button, I get that. So, colleagues, time check. We started about 35 minutes, unfortunately, 35 minutes later than, than scheduled because of the technical problems that we had. It's 2:20 right now. I know that everybody has a busy schedule, but I hope that you still have time to, to have some discussion here on what we heard. I would like to start with Ms. Coffey, you know, clarifying and substantial questions.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm on to substantial questions, but...
Awesome.
I think the sign ordinance enforcement is, you know, exemplary of my biggest question on enforcement, which is that residents do get really frustrated when they don't know where it is they're supposed to go. We hear all the time about people who put in a reporter problem, it gets closed with the information of, oh, you didn't put it in the right place. And I think as much as I would love to imagine that we can educate the community into knowing every single thing, I think the reality is what we need is that no wrong door. And I would love to just kind of hear from a technology perspective, what is it going to take for us to get a backend system that can take it all in and be nimble enough to sort? I'm seeing a lot of looking across. I know that this is, it's a really complicated thing because we have grandfathered in systems. Everyone has developed their technology on their own, and now it's, it's reconciling all of that together. But I do think, to me, that is the end goal that I am most interested in, in getting to.
I'm going to start on the least technology focus, given I always say I'm words and, and relationships, not technology and numbers. But I think a lot of what the first step is, is making sure that we are stepping into the feet of our, the feet, the shoes of our constituents. So for example, we, when working with the reporter problem webpage, which is in flux in, we've had a one-phase update, we're working on updating it, is saying, okay, I'm walking down the street, I see something, right? And I want to report it, and I Google it, because that's how people live in the, in the world. Where do I end up, right? And so where you end up is the reporter problem webpage. So that is, to me, the first step is, it, that's the button pushing that I think Mark was referring to, is ensuring that we are not, previously reporter problem was the first button you saw on that page. You go there, you end up in the reporter problem system. Well, I want to talk about noise, or I want to talk about something that is not in the reporter problem system. So now either I end up in general inquiry, where our great constituent services team triages it, but that does have to get closed out because it's not being solved in there, right? So that's the frustration. If I could get the button ahead of the everything else button that will send me to the right place, that is, you know, that is, again, the first step. You know, we have, there are things with, and I'll let others talk to, things like permit Arlington that have a true ticketing system that is very different than a reporter problem system, and I can feel Arlova's going to like, and Shari are in the, in the, they're going to have things to share, I'm sure, but there are very different systems, right? So we're talking about, about those sorts of, of issues. But I think the first step is really understanding how our residents are accessing the places that they can make reports, and where there are opportunities to add things to reporter problem, I think is a great opportunity. But again, to me, the system on the backend doesn't matter if we're building the training, the relationship, and we're getting people into the right system from the jump.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's, there's, from the technology standpoint, there's two things at play that we're dealing with. One is that much of the information within some of these systems may also connect downstream to workflow systems. So reporter problem, for example, does have direct connections to some of our departments' work and ticketing systems, the same way that Chief Cobb's inspection software actually connects directly into, for instance, billing and, and his, his work management software. Same thing with the police department. Those things integrate to their records management system. And some of those things are at places to where they can't talk. Simple, you know, all the time happens in government. The other thing is, sometimes we don't want that information to talk to each other. And by that I mean, sometimes in one bucket, we may have identifying information, and in another bucket, we don't have identifying information. And this is something that we've talked about before. When you combine some of these data sets, on their own, they may be a concern within When you combine some of these data sets, on their own, they may be innocuous, but when you put them together, you may have privacy impacts that are unforeseen, or that we just don't want to put ourselves in a position to have, right? And that could be, you know, accidentally having identifiable protected health information. That could be, you know—and you see this sometimes at the state level, when somebody makes a complaint, some of that information that we want to be able to have somewhat protected, may put residents in an uncomfortable situation. So we're very careful about how we look at that. And I'll say, this is a problem that's been going on in communities for a while. One of the solutions is to just layer something on top of that, right? You just—and this is what Mayor Menino did in Boston, and, you know, years ago, layered a 3-1-1 system on all those disparate systems, and said, "We're going to take one big point of intake and then funnel them down." It doesn't solve your problem. It still, as Erica said, relies on employees, relies on our members of constituent services teams in all our departments, to have those connections, to be able to solve the problems effectively, efficiently, and to work quickly on behalf of our community members.
Yeah. Just one more question. I think, you know, the other—the other thing that is really on my mind is, is how do we get ahead of the things that are emerging or recurring problems, and that kind of trend analysis? And I think the point that code enforcement is regulatory, not policy, is really well taken, but someone, at some point in the process, needs to look at, "Okay, we've had, you know, 20 violations that look almost identical. What are we doing on a systems level to correct for that, make a change?" And I'm wondering, kind of, who has responsibility for that overarching look, and how often, and how can we kind of bump that up, so that we're identifying times where policy needs to be changed, or practice needs to be changed, that can actually decrease the need for, you know, retroactive enforcement action to occur?
I'll take first, and then let others chime in. I think, to answer who has the responsibility, I think we all have the responsibility as things come across. I think the hoarding is a great example, and Erin talking about staff and being empowered to lift their head and see that there's a larger thing going on that we need to elevate. But I will say, on a very practical level, our constituent services team is doing that a lot, all the time. And we're using, you know, the general inquiry as where we're figuring out, where are the pain points that we're not solving externally and getting people to the right place, right? Jenny has done—and Alejandra have done a great job of—with Caitlin, of figuring out, like, what are those top things, right? And we're using that data to do our next phase of updating to our front-facing, to get people in. So they're not going to general inquiry, but we're using a lot of that. Our constituent services team sees the inquiries that are coming in, they see the emails that are coming in from people, and are working really hard to figure out what are those trends and the things that we need to be aware of.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the goal in my mind is not only adding, like, a specific button on reporter problem, but to say, you know, "We really shouldn't have this many of this type of issue, and so maybe the ordinance isn't clear enough, maybe people don't know they're supposed to be adhering to it. So what does—you know, what board action might be required," and making sure that that kind of—we're empowering constituent services and code enforcement to come to us and say, you know, "We're dealing with this, but it doesn't have to be a problem, and we have a proposed solution if the board amended something or proposed something new." So I'm very interested in that as a conversation as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. On to Ms. Cunningham.
I really appreciate all the time and effort and expertise that went into today. It's just so helpful for me, and I think for our whole community, to see how complex it is and how much work we do to make the connections happen. So thank you. I am very interested in just elevating that probably the number-one complaint I hear is I haven't heard back from anyone. So I know that, as we're working on the intake and the kind of front door, every door being okay, what can we do to alert ourselves when that's happening, and to see the trends over time, as well as have a way for a resident or business to address that without coming through the board office, which I understand not subtly causes pain.
Well, yeah, a couple of things. And I'm—and I'm really going to encourage Matt, or Wayne, or Shariar, to come and speak to this issue. But, you know, we have found, and when we're getting issues in through reporter problem, and I use this as an example, my next-door neighbor reported in that there was a sign at the corner of the street we live on that was faded and needed to be replaced. He put it in reporter problem, and three and a half months later, the sign was replaced. But he—there was no automatic response that said, "Oh, that's a sign. We do our signs in batches every quarter. So you may not hear back from us for three months, so everything's fine." What he got was message received, silence. So we have to work, and I—that's—we're working on that with Erica and the constituent services team, to put in some simple, you know, standard responses that speak to a number of those situations. That would, I think, answer a lot of the questions, not all of them, because people—people, at the end of the day, you know, and I went and I talked to my next-door neighbor, and he said, "Oh, I'm fine. I know you guys are going to get to it." But that's because he's my next-door neighbor. But most of the people in the county say, "Okay, put something in, I just haven't heard anything." And that really, you know, study after study has shown, people will be patient, as long as they know where they are in the queue and when they're going to hear back.
Right. That's great. And I think that's part of what I've asked a few times about, and would encourage us to continue to push on, is some sort of regular reporting that shows what's getting better, where the hotspots are, what might need further investment. This was really helpful, but I think we might also get to something that's quarterly, or just kind of pops out, and that would be helpful. And then the last thing I'll just highlight, I would find it useful, as you did for hoarding, to go through a couple other use cases, maybe at a future manager update. Some of the ones that I hear frequently are, I need to build out my, you know, my hair salon, and I got different answers from the fire marshal, from CPHD, from occupancy, et cetera. The noise issues, we've heard, you know, a new building's going up, and how or what are the things to expect there, and then parking. But kind of a couple use cases, and that might be part of your education component as well, of, here's the fact sheet about what typically happens, what to expect, and if something goes off the rails, how to fix it. Thank you.
Any comments? Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Mr. Di Ferenti.
Thanks to—thanks for the questions from Ms. Coffey and Ms. Cunningham. I guess particularly, you know, thinking about the answers on technology. Forward-facing is important, and I heard that. Don't want co-mingling of some data, heard that. If there's specific technology fixes—it doesn't have to be today, but like, I think it would be helpful to find a listable, small number of technology fixes that either we can afford—cannot afford in our immediate CIP, or we can, and like, punch list those out, if that makes sense. So I'd love to hear thoughts on that.
In some cases, we have done that. And, well, I'll use a public safety example first, right? The new computer-aided dispatch program that's been awarded and is under implementation is going to allow us to have more robust data connections across some of the ticketing and software solutions. So one of the things that we have envisioned is, we sat down with departments and talked about their workflow, and we are going to be designing that program, so that when a 911 call taker receives a call that is not public safety, right? It's maybe, "Hey, look, there's water leaking out of the street," right? That we have a better data connection directly into water, sewer, and streets. We have that right now through the situational awareness unit, where we pick up the phone and we call the number, and we have, you know, we have these points of connection and email distribution lists, and the ability to put in tickets that way. But having an automated workflow that extends out is one of the things—just an example of one of the things that we're doing. And then, as we go through, and, you know, Greg can speak more on this, but the new work management program actually consolidated across DES some of the data points and work ticketing, and has allowed greater extension out, particularly to public safety departments.
I just want to add one thing before Greg goes. The system—I talked about this at one of the board meetings, I know the community was going, "Huh?" Between the manager's office and the board office with our STAR system or whatever, that's all based on Microsoft Dynamics, which is a system—underlying technology is expandable, ad infinitum. So the underlying technology exists. We run into a situation where permits plus does not use Microsoft Dynamics. Let's just be—and we're not going to spend any money to convert it to Microsoft Dynamics. Then we have to figure out how to pull that information up and cross, like we just did with our public safety system. So over to you, Greg.
All right. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this. Just a little bit of background, I can't remember how many years ago it was that we started reporter problem. We started with one system, and then we changed that a couple of years ago to Q-Sen and Q-Alert, which often offered an even better structure, and enabled us to grow what was originally a DES thing, to a parks thing, to a public arts thing, to now some things in police and so forth. So I think we're kind of—we're willing to explore those boundaries of trying new things to put in the system, but we've also concluded that it will never be the solution for everything. I mean, we've—even within our own work order systems and things we have just in our department, there's no one technology that serves things. So you really got this family of solutions that you're dealing with, that evolved over time, and you have to periodically reassess which group is doing what stuff. So it's never going to be one thing. I wish I had Claudia O'Connor, she would opine on this greatly, because she's the one who's often the one challenged to expand those boundaries. We will continue to do that, but I just want to manage some expectations on how far we can go.
So—go ahead.
I could add one—
No, no, no.
Sorry.
Go right ahead.
One thing that the fire department has started, and we're trying to implement, is a system called Community Connect. And it's something that—there is possibility for expansion with that program, but it's something that we're encouraging residents and businesses alike to go on and register through Community Connect, and it allows you to, specifically to the fire department, request services. It's not necessarily a complaint platform, but it is something where you can request us to come out, and even if nothing else, consult with you and help you try to find the answer that you're looking for. You can go on and register your pets, you can register if you have impairments and you need specific help. So there's a lot of things on the residential side, the personal side, as well as the business side, where, you know, we launched that about four months ago, on a soft launch, but we're hoping that it's going to expand more, and the constituents will have that as a one-stop-shop to at least request services from the fire department. Again, not necessarily a complaint model, but request services that may eliminate some complaints.
So—go ahead. The only thing I was going to add to your point was that, you know, and we talk about this a lot, but with staffing concerns, we have found ourselves, in the last three years, looking at technology to make us more and more efficient, and even through crime analysis, and we call it, you know, hotspot policing. Some jurisdictions call that, where they'll actually dispatch their officers where crime analysis or AI has told them where those trends are. Now, we use humans right now for that, that obviously have some technology. And I recently asked a question to our crime analysis. I said—and I wasn't asking, can they be replaced with the technology, but I was asking, do we have technology that can assist them in their job? And while they looked a little nervous, they said absolutely, they did. But they said, yes, it is out there. But what we have found, though, is not so much to answer the question, but also to, if we can predict where crime is going to happen, then we can use community engagement, or we can use forward-thinking to actually address that before it happens. You know, we don't have—we can—we can do things like, "Okay, let's go out and get grants for—to get more pods, to give people for these certain cars that we know are getting stolen, are going to get—to traditionally get stolen around Christmas time or the holidays." And so those are the kind of things that we're looking for, to use engagement and to go after, and to actually give the community tools themselves to address those trends that we know tend to come back at the same time every single year, so.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Mr. Di Ferenti.
Thank you. I sort of associate myself with Ms. Cunningham's comment on specific use areas, but I'm going to refrain from talking just on that. I would say that people matter, and the investment in the ombudsman's office, and the work that you guys do is so important. I've run down rabbit holes and figured out that there's a policy, and the answer is politely, "No." I've run down rabbit holes, and sometimes we've figured out that there is a solution. And so, just a huge appreciation for the ombudsman's office, and Mr. Manager, for your investing there. I guess the other takeaway that I would dream for is the data point. And I don't know that I'm at a quarterly review, but if twice a year, we could see a spreadsheet—and please don't tell us, each of the constituent services people, because all of us will email them directly, CCing the appropriate deputy county manager. I still want to thank those people, and those folks are what is the difference between whether government is good or not, in many, many cases. But I would love, twice a year, to sit with Erin or Mark and the ombudsman's team, or whatever the right universe of folks is, and look at an Excel spreadsheet with the categories, and look at a heat map. Because that would—like, that would—I know that would help us stop going down the wrong rabbit holes, and also help—and there'd be more belief from staff that we're going to say no politely when we should, but there'd also be more belief from residents that we would figure it out. So that's—I thought it was the right question. I didn't come in with that planned at all, but it is—does seem like—and maybe—and the reason I'm saying twice a year is because, like, quarterly—I've discovered with the environmental issues, quarterly is like every other day, it feels. So that's the suggestion and takeaway, though.
If I could add something, and I know, you know, everybody, at least at this table, I know is paying close attention to the new administration, and they now have a new Department of governmental—
Efficiency.
—governmental, yeah, efficiency, or whatever it is. The creation of new—but I've asked people to compare this presentation to what we did seven years ago, okay? And it's very intentional on my part. Erica, who is in my office, the assistant county manager, oversaw, along with Shannon, putting together this presentation. What we had last time, and it's no disrespect meant to Shariar and his group, it was very focused on that, and not on the interconnections. So I want to thank the board. You've driven this point home to me, and we—it is a work in progress, okay? We need to be able to cut across our—I don't even want to call them silos, that's not even fair, we all know each other. But we're doing a better job of that. And as far as putting out the data analytics and showing those kinds of things, we have the ability, with Microsoft Dynamics, to do that. But garbage in, garbage out, you know, we're cleaning up the data as it comes in. And it—I have to tell you, it's an enormous undertaking, and we have to—the main thing I'm concerned about is, we have to train our staff, give them permission to lift their heads and say, "They see a problem, the staff, and they can report it." I'm thinking of the firefighters who came in, and it was one of the hoarding situations. They came into the apartment where there was a deceased individual, and there was, frankly, a lot of bad stuff going on around. They did their job, transported the person, and considered it the end of the day. That doesn't mean they were bad, just means it was a missed opportunity. So we have to really empower our employees to do that. That is where a lot of power is going to come from. And I encourage the board and the members of the public to understand that as we go through that. That's an organizational issue. We have to continue to do it. The reason why I started off with that example about incoming administration, you can't just pick a person and put them over there and say, "Everything's going to be fine." It's got to be—every employee in the county needs to know that.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Di Ferenti, any other comments that was closing? And I believe that we overstayed our welcome here a little bit.
Why don't you come back at 3:30?
Yeah. So we will be back at 3:30. I have two things to add to everything that is said, and only very epigramatically. Number one is, the equity issue is a life and kicking here. Not everybody has access to governmental services, not everybody understands what really a complaint is, or how to forward discomfort with something, or how to forward a desire for solutions. Not everybody has the same facility to do that. So I think that we have become a lot more responsive to this. I really appreciate the efforts, especially with the Office of Constituent Services, that's also now multilingual, et cetera. This is a very big improvement. But this remains, for me, a field where, you know, trying to understand— But this remains for me a field where, you know, trying to understand community heuristics where we are talking about here is, is an art, as it, as it is a science and a technology solution. So the second thing is with, with frequent flyers, especially with DES, you know, the tech, the technical things, sometimes norms are changing, standards are changing, you know, what is now an acceptable rainbather or a cistern is that, you know, one, one, one week is this, this thing and the next week is something else because something has changed. So finding a way to, to be, to be fluid and proactive in, in communicating changes in standards and expectations on the enforcement side. I understand that this is not easy, but, but it's a, it's a place where I, where I see potential for improvement. And that said, thank you, everybody, for this encyclopedic tour through our, you know, part of our enforcement system. It is much appreciated and very insightful for me and I believe for everybody else. And with that, we are going to close because we are going to come back at 3:30 to talk about trees and stormwater. Thank you. And running to.